Tonight saying the prayer and also doing the pledge of allegiance, that's amazing in itself. This is the first time I've ever been here, and what I want to talk about is the Englewood project. I would like for somebody to tell me what that project is all about, because it's going nowhere. I went up and down the road up there and talked to the proprietors there, and none of them are happy with it. The parking there is just ridiculous. You couldn't get a tow truck through there if you tried. If they're backing out, they're gonna hurt somebody, other than parking spots in there. And also, the buildings around there, it seems that the guys that own the property around there are dissatisfied with the city and the big building that you all have here. The windows are all busted out and trashed everywhere, and the back of it's just... It looks like a mess, but yet they have to get their properties cleaned up and looking good, and then they get their license taken away from them, in some cases, for the violations. And what I... I made some calls on the code violations that the other people are doing, and they told me I was making too many of them. How many is too many? You know, I'd like to know how many is too many. They can get away with it, but we can't. I can't get away with it. I would like for somebody to tell me that, and the citizens, you guys, you got money everywhere. You got $10 million put up for a project, the IPL project, that we've already voted down twice. Use it. Proposition P is silly. I mean, how many times are you gonna tax, you know, taxes? I mean, we just keep on and keep on taxing us. Pretty soon, we're not gonna have a check. You... I think it's the socialist movement that we're in, and I think that you guys are gonna have a hell of a time trying to get that going. You know, I mean, that's what I wanna say right now, you know. I mean, I got... The American people are fed up with you. They're fed up with this council, they're fed up with Independence, they're fed up with the United States government. We're just fed up. And I'll leave it at that. And thank you again for doing the pledge of allegiance. That's amazing.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Our next speaker is Jackie Davis, who would like to speak regarding the Englewood District. Ms. Davis.
I'm Jackie Davis, and I live on 1725 Harbin. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak at the city council meeting. I received a letter concerning the Englewood District. Someone paid $6.80 to mail me this letter, so I thought I should at least respond to it. It is my understanding that some people in the district, in this Englewood District, want to charge the people 1% more sales tax, they are saying, for improvement. If these businesses want to do this, it should be on their dime, not on the taxpayer. It is also a fact that not all of these businesses want this. There has been some changes in the neighborhood, and not for the best. We don't need any more. We're tired of surprises. The City of Independence allowed a large building to go into our neighborhood without our knowledge. It's for events such as weddings and so forth, but we, the people, have to put up with the noise and the traffic. The answer, in a letter from the mayor, was that it was in the art district, but in reality, it is on a residential street. Enough is enough. They've had added some real large wide sidewalks for this district that are not hardly used except for their art fairs, yet the schoolchildren have to walk in the street to catch a bus to school. We don't need any more taxations. We all know that so much of the time, there is abuse in it and lots of waste. Excuse me. I'm asking for you guys to vote against this. There's been enough waste of taxes. You are all here to represent all of the people, not just some of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Osman, who wishes to speak on, say, resolution for medical marijuana. Mr. Sherman.
Madam Mayor, council members, and staff, wanted to thank you very much for having me this evening. My name is Andrew Osman. The address that I manage is called Crackerneck Plaza Shopping Center, located at 19321 East Highway 40 in Independence, at the intersection of 40 Highway and Little Blue Parkway. The reason for me coming before you tonight is not as a medical marijuana advocate, but as a property owner. Couple of months ago, the state of Missouri and residents of the state did approve medical marijuana to be legal. Whether or not you agree with that or not, that is the fact of this state and half the other states in the United States. The key is, and I have to respect the city immensely, because it is very difficult to come up with a proper code to protect the residents, the business owners, and make sure that you have a business properly licensed in the city. The key here, and unfortunately, I'm given five minutes or three minutes, and I don't have my PowerPoint presentation tonight, so I provided you a handout of my property in general. The way I interpret the statute through Missouri, and I understand that you approved this statute through Independence and had your own rules and regulations, and there are five main points in that that you approved, and my understanding is, maybe you are gonna reconsider something to that effect this evening on a possible new or revised agenda for that. It doesn't necessarily fit in a box, every sort of authorization that you could do for medical marijuana in a particular location. Meaning, if I were to go to Independence Center, that would qualify me, because I'm around C1 or C2, and there's no residence, there's not a church around there. Everything falls into compliance. The unfortunate thing is, there are many others that don't fall within that category, that are zoned commercial, that are either abutting residential or are far enough away that there's a question mark as to how far away is acceptable. My property management company came to agreement with a medical marijuana dispensary. We selected them after careful consideration of tens of licenses. We did the vetting process. We interviewed every single person to figure out who we thought had the best application. But in our situation, we carefully looked at that and said, "All right, if we're gonna put them into our shopping center, what is gonna be the effect?" Well, we have a very successful compounding pharmacy that's already in there. They distribute to a number of different senior living facilities and mail order facilities across the state. We have a number of holistic doctors that are in there, both dentists and chiropractic clinics. And we felt, out of all our properties that we have in our portfolio, this is the one that we felt is commercial enough, of a high-end caliber enough, that we would put them in there. So I present to you a zoning map of what is currently through City of Independence. And our property is highlighted on the second page, showing two pad sites and a main shopping center. And I outlined the distance between what is classified as, quote, "residential in nature through zoning" and our property. Even though we've agreed in principle, we still have to go through the process for the City of Independence to get approval. So if you look on this first map, which is color-coded, there's a green section saying R-A.
You have one minute.
Right behind that, I'm sorry.
You have one minute.
Behind that, we have a section R6.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
How much longer is your presentation?
One minute.
Well, I would do a motion to extend your time if it's going to be over a minute.
It will be three minutes.
Madam Mayor, I move to extend this gentleman's time to allow him to complete his presentation.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mary Nun, please call the wall.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doarty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Roberson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Ware?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. So in here, we have two green sections, a light section and a dark section. That specifically abuts our property. And on the second page, you will see the distances. Those two green properties, light and dark, are number one in the floodplain zone. Number two are owned by Jackson County and the city respectively. They're walking trails. There's a park there. In my estimation, it probably never would be residential in nature ever, because it's in a floodplain. It's next to the Little Blue. But yet, my property is within 500 feet of, quote, "residential in nature." And the way the code is written currently, it says, "Medical marijuana dispensary facilities may not be within 500 feet of any residential district or residential dwelling. This distance is measured from property line to property line, not building to building, not per code of State of Missouri, by walking the shortest distance." I'm taking the shortest distance from a linear standpoint. The second thing is, on the opposite side, we have, at the very edge of Independence, a large green swath. That is also zoned R6. That is a large residential neighbor that has, I believe, one house on there, on 11 and 1/2 acres. Instead of measuring building to building or building to house, we're measuring property line to property line, the very closest distance. So in this case, the property line, instead of having to walk 1,400 feet to then go up to their property line, which happens to be in Lee Summit, get into their driveway, and then go up their driveway to their house, we take a straight shot, and that is 290 feet. It happens to be on a cliff that, up until this point, we had absolutely no clue that there was actually a home right there, because it's hidden by trees and all the office buildings surrounding there. So in closing, I just ask for your consideration to look at this point number C, 500 feet, and suggest some sort of language to say, "Instead of property line to property line, building to building, or, in the Missouri state statute, by walking on a normal course on a normal street to calculate that distance." If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I've done my due diligence, and I hope that you guys would consider this later this evening. And for one last thing, time is running out, because my understanding is applications are due next week, and you are docked significant points if you are not approved by the city. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Jason White, who wishes to speak on Proposition P.
Thank you, Jason White. Live at 1024 South Forest. Wanted to talk about some of the financial issues around Prop P garnered from knocking on doors and being at a variety of meetings and being active in this campaign. Number one, a lot of folks have asked, "Well, why can't we just pull these revenues out of the general fund?" And to those folks, I've asked, "Did they pay attention to the debate in April and May, when this council chamber was full of folk concerned about their health insurance?" You all don't have a healthy financial budget. You started the budget process, $3.5 million in the red, and went through quite a debate, as you found the balance on what to spend funds on. There obviously is not additional funds to run a no-kill shelter and put additional police officers on the street. If people would stop and pause and compare the revenue in Independence to run city government compared with our neighbors of Liberty, Lee Summit, and Blue Springs, they'd realize we are an extremely low-tax community. We do not generate the revenue for the level of services that our other suburbs do. And so, the expectation that you're gonna suddenly find additional dollars for these additional expectations just isn't there. I'll probably not get a smile from some of you, but we're a bedroom community. We don't have very much industry like our big neighbor to the west. So our taxation issues fall on residences. If we had more industry, that might be a different question. That isn't gonna turn around tomorrow. We have to have realities of what the service expectations are today, and that means revenue streams related to individuals, to residents, to citizens. People have grumped about, "Well, why couldn't we've used that money from the solar farm that we built out there at Rock Creek?" Well, some of those folks don't realize that the charter structures the budget so that things you build under IPL, you couldn't have taken those funds, even if you didn't want a solar farm, and spend them to hire cops or put on the animal shelter. The charter divides those up. It's a wise document. It keeps those funds separate. This, quite frankly, is low-hanging fruit. 15 years ago, when I wanted to buy a pair of pants, I went to the store and I paid a sales tax. The fact that society and technology has changed, so now I may buy them online, I still should be paying a fair share to support the services that the community affords to me. I'm confident in the oversight process. We started those in 1998 with the streets and park tax issues, and since then, literally hundreds of citizens, whose names aren't published anywhere except occasionally on the website, as providing service to their citizens, have funneled through those. They have a chance to look at the documents, challenge the city staff, ask the questions, and then they report on a regular basis back for the public. That process has worked well. I'm confident that it's gonna work well when we pass Prop P on tomorrow. Talk about the cops for a second. People have said, and I've been surprised at this one, "We don't need any more police officers." Now frankly, that's been pretty darn few, because those tend to be the naysayers who are just looking for a reason to vote no on anything. But I've been around a while, and for the last 12 to 15 years, we've been recognizing. There's been formal studies, and if you look at the amount of blacked-out time for our police officers and the time to get them there for a minor issue, it's pretty darned obvious we need more police officers. The additional 10 is gonna be well-spent. Then we get into some questions about, "Well, after we get 30." Well, after we get 30, none of you are here. I'm not here. That's 12 or 15 years from now. I'm not gonna be up here harping at you all about city issues, and you aren't gonna be here listening to me. It's really a non-argument to be sweating what happens to additional revenue 15 years downstream, 'cause what happened 15 years ago, nobody knew we'd be in this bind today. So we need to give that one a little bit of a thought. The animal shelter is a good program. I tell you, I didn't get there easily, because I grew up in the era of a municipal shelter, and it was to protect the citizens. But this community wants and demands a no-kill shelter. I was sitting here a few months ago, and there was good debate in the community on health insurance. And I thought, "If we didn't have an animal shelter, like some people say, and if we decided to make it back to a municipal shelter, I'd be willing to bet you all a very fine dinner." This group would be louder and more rambunctious, and your phones would be off the hook. As I've knocked on doors, this community likes their little furry friends. They expect us to respect and take care of them. It's a value statement. Last door I knocked on yesterday was a gentleman who doesn't have a lot. I made that judgment based on his home and his car, and I was a little suspect when I made my conversation. He said, "I want a sign." And he was mad. It's Sunday afternoon, and he wants a Prop P sign in his yard. And he said, "Well, it's a little late in the game." We'd called three weeks ago, couldn't find who to get signs from, and I said, "Well, why?" And he goes, "We gotta take care of the animals." That guy did not have a lot, but he made a value judgment. And that's what's gonna happen tomorrow. The citizens will make a value statement on how we're gonna protect my neighbors, kids, the old folks, and the animals in town.
You have one minute.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Deborah Holmes, who wishes to speak on medical cannabis zoning.
Hello. Thank you. I'd like to...
I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. It means a lot to me. And also, I want to thank the mayor for some of the work that she's done for the kids that have grown out of the foster care system and trying to make sure they're taken care of. But, right now, I'd like to speak, actually, as a patient and a disabled veteran who's lived in Independence for over two decades. I'm not just a disabled veteran. I've spent 26 years in corporate America. I have a finance degree. I'm not the average person you would think of when you think stoner. Okay? But I did serve in the Air Force. I was part of Desert Storm. I lost 14 people from my office. Like many veterans, I suffer from PTSD and chronic pain, run the gamut of what the VA threw at me like spaghetti at a wall to see what stuck. Until 2008, I thought cannabis was for stoners as well. Until my son got in a really bad automobile accident, was in a coma for nine and 1/2 days, had non-combat TBI, and fractured his neck, and was up in Creighton University Hospital for two months and spent 90 days basically screwed into a halo. And got, and when he came home, he was using a walker for balance. And I saw, actually, cannabis actually seemed to stabilize the TBI. And he is a successfully married, employed individual who is out in California, who is a cannabis patient. And so, you know, fast forward, they threw lots of drugs at me. I did not like the side effects. The side effects were part of the reason I walked away from my very successful career at DST, before they got bought out. I hold this card. I'm a proud medical cannabis patient. And the reason I'm here is that I am the growing face of cannabis and where it's going. I am the biggest growing demographic in cannabis patients. Educated. We work. We're productive. We want to get things done. We want our lives back. I ditched six prescriptions, and I'm in the process of ditching a seventh. And I feel as if some of the zoning that has been proposed is more out of fear, you know, because we did see people going after meth. You know, we were known as the meth capital for a long time. But this isn't meth made in someone's bathtub. This is lab-tested medical product that the voters voted in, and 60%, over 60% of Congressional District 5 voted for it. Your constituents voted for it. So, when you're actually saying, "You can't be by Truman Library," or, "You can't be in the historic district," if you look at Amendment 2, part of the process to fill out your application is to prove that you are actually accessible to your patients. So, your policy is going against constitutional law. It's basically saying, if you live in this zip code, or you live in this zip code, we don't want it there. We voted for it, but we don't want it in our backyard. We don't want tourists to see it. But here's the deal, is that 60% plus of the United States is legal now, and your tourists coming here, a lot of them are from legal states. Hiding it from them is not prudent. There are reciprocating things. I mean, we closed our health department recently because of budget constraints. But yet, we're strangling ancillary business off of Nolan Road like hassling the vapor macon? We're, we need those tax dollars. We need those dispensaries. You look at the statistics on how many kids are Title I eligible in Independence and what the median income is compared to all of Missouri and the nation. We are behind. We need that tax revenue. We need the jobs that they're going to bring in. We need that money because we made an oops, giving some tiffs away off of the 40, you know, off of the Salsa Road, Little Blue Parkway, and 39th Street corridor at the wrong time. And we had Famous Dave's leave, and we had some other people leave, and we need that money. We need those jobs. Our unemployment rate in certain parts of Independence is 2% above the national average. This is an opportunity, and we need to do it right. I know that we have a long history and a proud history, and we're a conservative community, a tight-knit community. But we can no longer shun these businesses. We need to embrace them in a way to help the patients like me, so that it's not an undue burden, and you're not losing my tax dollars when I drive over into Blue Springs, Lee Summit, or Kansas City, Missouri, and spend those dollars elsewhere. Why don't we keep them in Independence?
You have one minute.
Otherwise, you're going to have delivery service, you know, from, and people leaving Independence. We already have contraction in certain parts of Independence. I actually sent something ahead of time to Councilman DeLucy, and with statistics, so that you can actually see those stats per zip code. And Jackson County is a dismal 74th in health in all of the counties of Missouri. You know, 30% of the overdose deaths are actually benzodiazepines people take to go to sleep. It's not just the opiate crisis. It's the over-prescription crisis. And we can do something about it, but we have to be open-minded. We cannot continue to shun it and say, "Not in my neighborhood. I'm scared," and think that it's going to bring crime. Because actually, if you look at Pueblo's statistics, it did not, and they had a net positive effect in 2016 of $35 million in their community. $35 million. They have less residents than we do, by like 6,000. So, I'm comparing apples to apples, in a sense, as far as community size. So, please hear these people out when they're talking about zoning and what it means, and think about it from your constituents' perspective as well, and the burden it puts on us, but also growth in Independence and where we want to go with it. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jonathan, I'm sorry, Jonathan, what's your last name?
Low.
Low, who wishes to speak about medical marijuana ordinances. Mr. Low.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Jonathan Low. I lease a building off 10809 East 40 Highway. First, I'm here as a longtime advocate of normal Kansas City, which is a local medical marijuana patient chapter, and new approach. New approach was a leading drive behind the amendment that was written and is now Article 14 of the Missouri Constitution. I'm here first on behalf of the medical marijuana patients of Independence and the business hopefuls who have done their due diligence under the Missouri Register, speaking more specifically to these adopted ordinances. These ordinances are in clear violation of patients' rights under the Missouri Constitution. Secondly, I'd like to speak as a patient, as I am a registered patient in this state. I was personally appalled by some of the comments made by certain council members on protecting Independence residents. Medical marijuana patients are not second-class citizens. Medical marijuana businesses are not second-class businesses. I brought with me my attorney, who can speak a little bit more on some of the violations that we have found in the ordinances under Article 14. Her name is Jasmine Abu Kessim.
Good evening, Mayor Weir and members of the council. Thank you for allowing me to be here today and speak on behalf of Mr. Low, who is one of the owners of a company called Mantis Nine. Mantis Nine hopes to and was planning on being a business that operates in Independence with a dispensary facility that will make access to medical marijuana to patients more available. Mantis Nine has gone through an incredibly rigorous process of applying, preparing to apply for the license, and in finding a location and preparing that location to meet the state's requirements. It has entered into a lease, which you can imagine involves a huge risk and an enormous amount of time and money. Preventing Mantis Nine from being able to operate a business that it has a right to do under Missouri law is unconstitutional. Specifically, many of the ordinances that have been passed, perhaps not shockingly so, are in direct contravention of the Missouri Constitution on their face. When watching the July 15 meeting where Councilman Doherty and others were proposing passing these ordinances, I never once heard about a study that had been done, any type of polls that were taken, surveys that would support this, you know, desire to protect the citizens of Independence. Really, where these ordinances came from is an animosity towards and an ignorance of what medical marijuana is. Medical marijuana patients are not stoners, are not hippies running around. They're people like Debbie Holmes, people who deserve to have access to medicine that the state has decided they should have access to. The beginning of Amendment 2 starts with a patient's right to access medical marijuana. Many of the ordinances, as I said, directly contravene the Missouri Constitution. For example, the requirement that there be a 2,500-foot buffer between facilities is nowhere in Amendment 2, nor is it in any of the Department of Health and Senior Services regulations in the Missouri Register. In addition, the measurement of that distance does not comply with what Missouri law states it should be. According to Missouri law, the distance should be essentially the closest way to get from one facility to another that is lawful and does not require trespassing. So, that right there tells you that that ordinance needs to go out the door. Second, the ordinance is providing that there shall be no consumption on-site. That ordinance also violates Missouri law because Missouri law provides facility owners with the right to have a private patient room where patients and their primary caregivers or a family member may consume. But, obviously, that also directly contravenes Missouri law.
You have one minute.
Excuse me, ma'am. How much longer do you have to speak?
I would say a few minutes.
I move to extend her speaking time to three minutes.
Thank you.
Second. So, I moved and seconded. Sorry, discussion. Hearing none, please call the wall.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doherty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Roberson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Continue, please.
One of the ordinances that poses the largest problem is the regulation that a dispensary facility not be within 500 feet of another dispensary facility. The regulations in Amendment 2 are tailored to be able to provide patients that need access to medical marijuana to have, you know, those dispensaries as avenues they can get to and means that are not unduly burdensome. Many of these ordinances are unduly burdensome because they make it extremely difficult, if not impossible, for facility owners and patients to exercise the rights that they're granted by Amendment 2. Moreover, I think that there was a statement, a couple of statements made that, oh, well, the city will, or the state will come back and correct us. The state won't come back and correct you. The judiciary will correct you, and that will be because of a plethora of lawsuits that the city will be faced with by not only people such as my client, Mr. Low, but by property owners and by patients. And I think that that's something the city should strongly consider. One of the benefits of having medical marijuana businesses in Independence is that they will provide, you know, much-needed tax revenue, and they will operate ethical businesses that will provide organic, chemical-free medicine to patients that need it. I think that merits considering versus our outdated reasons for why we shouldn't, why additional restrictions should be placed on these medical marijuana operations. Finally, you know, I think it should be said that a lot of these ordinances, if not amended, will be in direct violation of several sections of Article 1 of the Missouri Constitution, which outlines the Bill of Rights. Section 10 says, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of the law." But keeping these ordinances as they are will deprive individuals of property as well as liberty, being the consumption of medical marijuana that they have a right to do under state law. Second, these ordinances are an ex post facto law, meaning they impair contracts that have been entered into by individuals with reasonable reliance on the state laws and the reasonable expectation that the city is not going to enact regulations that violate those laws. Additionally, enacting, or not revising these ordinances will essentially constitute an inverse condemnation of properties which are already under contract. There are several other things in other ordinances I could address, but I just urge you that I think you've heard a lot from individuals tonight about why these ordinances should be reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening is Casey Phillips. Ms. Phillips, you're, you've requested to speak about comments made by a particular council member. I will just reiterate that, number three on your agreement to speak before the council, that you will not make any personal attack upon either public official or any other person. So, feel free to proceed with your comments, but please direct them to the council as a whole.
Okay. Thank you. My name's Casey Phillips. I've been an Independence resident for over 14 years. We bought our first home here, which we still live in. Our four kids have been born here. Two are in school and two will be in school in the years to come, so we're here for a very, very long time. And funny enough, my husband and I moved to Independence on Independence Day in 2005, so it feels like we were made to be here. So, much of what I wanted to say, I had emailed Mr. Doherty and the mayor a few days after his comment. I hope over the past few weeks, everyone has been able to reflect on this comment about Middle Easterns. As public figures, you know that you are held to a standard of being respectful and appropriate, like all of us should be. Many times, when I hear comments like these, it's out of a space of fear or not really knowing much about a certain culture or people. And sometimes, it's just a saying that we learned growing up, but really never understood the repercussions that it leads to. A friend of mine, Hassan Latif, oh, yeah, whatever, sorry, published in an article in The Star about this incident, and he says it's worth explaining what's wrong with this statement. His use of the term "Middle Easterns" and "Middle Easterners" specifically attributes criminal activity to all members of an ethnicity. This is a textbook example of racism. It's also just plain incorrect. Middle Eastern encompasses many different ethnicities. The Middle East is populated by Christians, by Jews, by Muslims, and other religions. The immigrants running the gas stations, convenience stores, and smoke shops that was talked about that come from areas that extend far beyond the Middle East. And, hold on. And my friend also, in his article, pointed out that immigrants have... And my friend also, in his article, pointed out that immigrants have much to contribute to America and to the city like Independence. A recent study by Kansas City's own Kaufman Foundation found that immigrants are most, are almost twice as likely as native-born to become entrepreneurs.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Yes.
I just received notice that there's no audio on City Seven, and I wondered if we could just pause for a moment until the audio gets back on.
Okay.
Okay? I want everybody to hear you.
Okay.
Let's take a five-minute recess. I'm sorry, I want to get back. Okay. I'm, uh, going to call the meetings back to order.
Really? Why not? Or just make a conditional like they did?
Give an explanation about the issue with the audio. Apparently, a council member was notified by Facebook that it was not operating, or I don't know, Councilman Robertson maybe. I want to assure everybody that we had a software update that decided to automatically happen during, during the meeting, so the entirety of the meeting is recorded and will be available for rebroadcast on City Seven and on our city website. So, be assured that all of your, your comments immediately after the meeting, we'll make sure that they all get, get updated online. So, apologies for that, we did miss a few things live, but all of that is now rectified so we can resume the meeting. And Ms. Phillips, if you'd like to come back up and pick up where you left off.
Thanks. Okay. So, the study found that immigrants are almost twice as likely as the native-born to become entrepreneurs. He also states in the article, "It's not a great economic policy to vilify the immigrant communities bringing businesses, revenue, and jobs to Independence. That's especially true when overwhelmingly, evidence shows that in comparison to native-born populations, immigrants have a lower criminal incarceration rate and there are lower crime rates in the neighborhoods where they live. Immigrants overwhelmingly benefit the communities they adopt." So, obviously, the comment was insensitive and irresponsible. However, I do believe in growth from these shameful times in our lives. Most of us have said or done very hurtful and sometimes racist things in our past. The most important part of those times, the most important part of those times when we use language and actions against a people group is that we learned from it. I am proud to live in Independence. I'm excited of the dire, oh, my goodness, direction we seem to be going. One way, as a resident of the city, that I can tell that there are the right people leading us is how they conduct themselves in public and in tough situations, and if they are willing to acknowledge their actions and move forward with correcting those errors. I hope that tonight there is an apology and a commitment to educate and heal ourselves in this facet. Leaders that choose to do this are the ones that I tell my kids about and tell them how they should conduct themselves when they make a mistake. So, I'll end with another quote from my friend Hassan. "At the very least, the immigrant communities living and working in Independence deserve better than to hear bigoted statements made about them at government meetings. These circumstances have provided the city's mayor and city council a critical opportunity to publicly affirm that they represent a city that is inclusive and welcoming to all." Thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes our citizens' requests. We have a presentation this evening regarding the Regional Animal Shelter Monetary Donation Fund. Mr. State Manager?
Yes, I would ask our shelter director, Christina Heinan, to come up and make a presentation to the council.
Thank you.
Mayor and members of the council, my name is Christina Heinan. I'm your interim animal services director. Tonight, I'm here to give you a quick update on the regional animal shelter. As you know, three weeks ago, we assumed operations of the shelter. During that time, we have done 35 adoptions, we've returned 48 animals to their owners. We currently have, as of today, 91 cats in the facility, and we have 48 dogs that are looking for forever homes. We have tried our best to make sure that the public as a whole did not notice a difference in operations. We've kept the same hours. Adoptions are Wednesday through Sunday. We have lost pet services seven days a week. We are there from 7:00 a.m. in the morning until 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock at night, making sure that all the animals are taken care of. And I am happy to say that in the last three weeks, we've had over 80 volunteers come forward and help out, which is amazing. But we also constantly get asked, "How can I, you know, can I donate money to the shelter? Can I donate food? Can I donate supplies? What else can I do to help?" Monetary donations, we are working with the Truman-Hartland Community Foundation. They have a couple of different ways to donate. You can do a one-time or recurring donation, either through their website or through a check. For a check, it's really easy. I know we went ahead and did a little mock example because we, we really found that we have to walk some people through it. You would actually make the check out to the Truman-Hartland Community Foundation and just in the memo, note that it's for the City of Independence Animal Shelter Fund. And if you wanted to do it online, they have a very simple process. You would go to their website, which is thcf.org. You would choose to donate now, and then you would select the City of Independence Animal Shelter Fund. They make it incredibly easy, incredibly fast, and I posted about it tonight on our Facebook page. We also take in-kind donations. We take unopened pet food, unopened pet treats, new pet toys. All of those can be dropped off at the shelter anytime that staff are there or more than willing to take them. A lot of those donations, we don't necessarily use for the animals that are there, but we use them for people who are adopting or people who come in and indicate, indicate to us that they're having issues making ends meet and that they need just a little bit of help in order to keep their animal in their home. So, we want to make sure that people who love their pets are able to keep their pets. So, whenever possible, if all they need is, you know, a sack of dog food, we're going to go ahead and make sure that they get that donation. If you guys have any questions, I'm here. If, I also put up the email address, if there's anybody watching who would like to volunteer, we are always willing to take more volunteers.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for Christina?
I have one, Madam Mayor. Are those donations tax-deductible?
They are. That's why we chose the Truman-Hartland Foundation, because they make it so easy and make sure that they are a 501(c)(3) and are set up to be.
Oh, so it, it doesn't matter that the ultimate recipient of the money is a city?
No. For the way it is set up with the Truman-Hartland Community Foundation, my understanding is because they are the ones that are receiving it, they hold it, there's a fee, a small fee that they do for managing the money for us, but because the donation is to Truman-Hartland, which is a 501(c)(3), it is tax-deductible.
Okay. And I noticed the hours, which are terrific, Christina, but let's say there is an animal that's a problem and it's 8:30 at night. The shelter's closed, what do I do?
Well, we would love if you're able, depending on what the problem is, if it's just that you found a lost dog, if you're able to give it care overnight, we would love that and we'll be there first thing in the morning. Even though our hours say, in all honesty, that we're there at 11:00 a.m. to start intaking animals, if you show up at our doors, we're going to be there. If we're there, we're going to help you. If it's an issue where you've come across an animal that is in need, you can always contact our after-hours line, and you'll be connected with police dispatch, who will determine, you know, what sort of emergency you have and call out an animal services officer, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm really pleased that we, this fund has actually existed for some time.
Yes.
It was set up by animal shelter volunteers and animal advocates several years ago, but it's nice now that we have an opportunity to really reactivate it for some, you know, a little bit different purpose than it was originally set up for, but still for the benefit of animals in our community. You know, I, I was not here at our last council meeting, but I did listen to the speaker who was concerned about the ability for, for people to spay and neuter their animals sometimes at an expense that they cannot afford, which is not only essential to the health of the animal, but also to controlling the population here in our city. So, you know, I'm glad that we were able to get this, it's something we've been talking about for some time, particularly with volunteers, but I'm glad that we were able to move it forward quickly because people are coming to the shelter and saying, "I, I want to help, where can I, how can I make a contribution?" And I think those funds will be very helpful to us in addition to grants that we apply for to help with things like spay and neutering and taking care of other needs for the pets in our community. So, thank you for the presentation. Our next presentation resolution is for our Employee of the Month, Madam City Clerk.
Whereas the city employee recognition program recognizes outstanding performance by employees of the City of Independence, and whereas an employee committee selects the Employee of the Month for exhibiting the qualities and ideals that best represent public service, and whereas the employee recognition committee has selected Leah Palmer, Event and Education Program Manager in the Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department, as the Employee of the Month for August 2019, the City Council of the City of Independence, Missouri joins in recognizing Leah Palmer as the City of Independence Employee of the Month for August 2019.
Okay, thank you very much. I would, I entertain a motion for approval of the resolution 19767.
So moved.
Second.
It's then moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doherty?
Yes.
DeLucie?
Yes.
Robertson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Leah Palmer has been with the City of Independence at Parks, Recreation, and Tourism for one year and nine months as Event and Education Manager at the National Frontier Trails Museum. Leah says that what she likes most about her job is finding new and exciting ways to share history with the public. At the museum, they have the opportunity to reach a really broad audience, and that is challenging, but also very rewarding. Leah says as far as career goals, as a historian, her goal will always to be, always be to work in a museum setting, as she can see herself running an educational department of a larger museum or historic site, but would like to keep an emphasis on research and writing, be that publishing articles or working on exhibits. The most valuable lesson Leah says she has learned in her career is that flexibility is everything. Things rarely go as planned, and the ability to change course quickly and efficiently is a useful skill in any job. Leah says there is no such thing as a typical day. Some days she spends lending, leading educational tours, others researching, and still others meeting with community partners to find fun, new ways to engage with the public. Leah says to her, "The history in Independence is what makes this place special. Independence, Missouri is in nearly every elementary school textbook. Not every town can say that." As a new mom, Leah's current hobbies largely involve stroller walks and making up silly songs, but in general, Leah says she loves city life. Her husband and she like to check out local restaurants, events, and shows whenever they can. Please join me in recognizing Leah Palmer as the August 2019 Employee of the Month. Okay. This takes us to our consent agenda. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mayor Weir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, no one more.
Hold that thought. We do have a proclamation this evening for the Harry S. Truman Chapter of the Missouri Society Sons of the American Revolution, 35th anniversary, Madam State Clerk.
Whereas the Independent City Council greatly esteems those whose efforts at preserving the past benefit the present and future of this community, and whereas the Harry S. Truman Chapter of the Missouri Society Sons of the American Revolution was established as an organization at Van Horn High School in Independence, Missouri on July 7, 1984, and was officially presented its charter at a meeting held at the Howard Johnson's in Independence, chartered 30 years ago on August 4, 1984. And whereas the Harry S. Truman Chapter members have documented they are descended from patriots and meet regularly to perpetu, perp, I don't know why.
Perpetuity.
Perpetuity, okay. "The memory and the spirit of the men and women who achieved American independence promote the development of an enlightened public opinion and foster patriotic citizenship. And whereas the members' purposes initiated by the 34 chapter members, patriotic, historical, and educational continue to be represented through the chapter's engagement in local, state, and national projects. And whereas the Harry S. Truman Chapter honors outstanding law enforcement and fire safety officials, has youth programs which recognize ROTC cadets, and outstanding Eagle Scouts, and conducts essays, oration, and poster contests annually. And whereas on August 10, 2019, the members and officers of the Harry S. Truman Chapter of the National Society of the American Revolution will celebrate the local organization's 35th anniversary at the regular chapter meeting at Woods Chapel United Methodist Church in Lee Summit, Missouri. Now therefore, Eileen and Weir, Mayor of the City of Independence, Missouri, celebrate with the Harry S. Truman Chapter of the Missouri Society Sons of the American Revolution."
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, Mayor Pro Tem? Now, Mayor Weir, consent agenda.
Mayor Weir, I move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items anybody?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
19775.
19775.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
19771 and 19772.
Okay.
And item number five, Madam Mayor.
And, Madam Mayor, if I may. 19774, please.
Okay. Any others? Okay. Madam City Clerk, we call the roll on the consent agenda minus Resolution 19775, 19771, 19772, item number five, and 19774.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doherty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Roberson?
Yes.
Vane Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Councilmember Huff, 19775.
Yes, I would like to postpone this indefinitely.
That is motion postponed.
Second.
Motion seconded to postpone indefinitely. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I understand that over 100 resumes have been received by the city and a day and a half of interviews have been given, and the subcommittee is ready to make a recommendation on the hiring of a clerk. I asked the clerk, because I was originally against spending the money, and everybody in this room should know, I am the cheapest person up here. I do not spend money frivolously. I asked the clerk, "How are you making out? Are you making it, are you doing it?" And she says, "I'm slammed, I'm swamped, I can't keep up, I don't know what I'm going to do." So I am against postponing it. I think, we discussed this as a budget amendment. I strenuously objected to the spending of the money because I believed at that time it was a waste. I have since discovered it's not a waste, we've gone forward, we're almost ready to pull the trigger, and yet, yet again, this council at the last minute is changing its mind for no reason other than I think I want to change my mind. I am so against tabling this. I am voting no.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If we can for a point of clarification perhaps, if we postpone this, that means this money will stay within the budget?
Yes.
Yes.
And we will fill the position?
Yes.
Correct.
Perfect.
Yes. Madam City Clerk, will you maybe explain what postpone indefinitely results in?
Well, typically when we postpone indefinitely, we do it to another meeting, but since you're not setting a time, then it's just kind of out there and dead.
And so, will an offer be extended to a person from this committee for the Assistant City Clerk position? That's my question.
Well, I wouldn't want to speak for the clerk, but I do believe you intend to make an offer on that position.
That's my intent.
Soon.
This week.
Thank you.
Okay. There is a motion and a second to postpone indefinitely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doherty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Because you're making a motion, or rather, an offer of employment, yes.
Roberson?
Yes.
Vane Camp?
No.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Motion passes. Councilmember Doherty, 19771.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm on the interview committee for this. Usually I've got a very, very flexible schedule, can get off at any time, but the current project I'm on has some very strict deadline dates and was not able to get their time and my time together. All I'm asking is that we could postpone this to the next regular meeting and I will be able to get the interview done. So that's all. I would just like to postpone it to the next council meeting, regular council meeting. So my motion is to postpone it.
771.
One.
There's a motion to postpone for two weeks and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doherty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
No.
Roberson?
No.
Vane Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Motion passes. Councilmember Doherty, 19772.
It is the same thing. I've got these lined up. I'm not able to, we've got it done in the deadline, but we'll have it done next week. And we'd like to do it at the same time we do the 771, just at the next, bring this back up at the next regular council meeting.
Okay, so there's a motion to postpone till the next regular council meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to know how long these vacancies have existed because if I remember correctly, it is months.
Which, which one?
The Planning Commission. We have had two vacancies on that Planning Commission for months.
Madam City Clerk, I don't.
I'd have to go and look. Heather Wiley's is recent.
That's a reappointment.
That's the reappointment, and I'd have to check and see what the other Planning Commission vacancy is.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
The committee that interviews and looks at these appointments is a rotating committee.
Correct.
DeLucy and I and Councilmember Doherty were on that rotating committee for this rotation. We attempted several different times and dates and there was none that fit with Councilmember Doherty's schedule at the time, and so we were told to go ahead and meet. And so we met, and the two of us agreed. So two out of the three have already agreed on these appointments. So it's a rotating committee, I won't be on it again for quite a while. Two of us had already agreed on these appointments, so I feel like the council ought to support the two that were able to meet and decide on these appointments tonight. And so I would like to reconsider 771, and I'd also like support from the rest of the council for our work in discussing these appointments and passing these tonight.
Were these individuals all interviewed?
There were, there were quite a number if you interviewed everybody, but a number of these people had, had applied for several different committees, and so we considered all of those.
Will the same subcommittee be the one selecting these people, or are we gonna be off the subcommittee?
I believe that all Councilmember Doherty is asking for is as a member of the committee that wasn't able to meet it, that he'd just like an opportunity to interview them.
Right, simple as that.
So it'd be the same three?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's a motion and a second to postpone 19772 till the next council meeting. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doherty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
No.
Roberson?
No.
Vane Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. 77, the motion passes. Councilmember Roberson, did you want to make a motion to reconsider?
No.
Okay. Councilmember DeLucy, item number five.
Yes, this is council action to purchase some computers for cars for the police department, which I have no problem with, but I wondered why we're adding, why are we buying six additional computer mounts? We're not buying that many computers. That just doesn't make any sense. I didn't know if it was a typographical error. I mean, I don't know how much mounts cost, but why would we do that?
Councilwoman, Chief Halsey had to step out to deal with the matter, so I don't have him at my disposal to help answer that question at the moment. I apologize.
I don't know if it's the case, but they could break.
I don't know.
And I would assume that the...
Like a true public servant, here comes Chief Short.
Obviously, I'm not with the police department, but since we do the same kind of situation, having extra mounts allows for us to transfer things without having to wait the time to unmount it out of one and then mounted it in another one. It's so that things can go on simultaneously at the same time. Does that make sense? So if we have one car that maybe is being decommissioned, we can build the one with the other mount and then transfer the computer as soon as it's ready. That way, we're not taking a vehicle out of service to start that.
Okay.
I mean, that's pretty typical with doing the, we do similar types of things with the fire truck as well.
Okay.
Is that common sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
For me.
Not for everybody.
That's right.
Are there any other questions on item number five? Councilmember DeLucy?
Move approval of five.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doherty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Roberson?
Yes.
Vane Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Item number five passes. Councilmember Perkins, 19774.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. 19774 is directing the city manager to do all things necessary to place a comprehensive mental health building on the market. Mr. City Manager, we do have a purchase offer to us as the city. How will this hinder in any way for us to activate and formally go into, to be able to respond to that option to purchase CMH building if we were to move forward with this action?
Sure. Councilmember Perkins, I believe that we would be able to still negotiate with the group that has submitted a proposal to us to acquire that. I think it's a good forum here to provide the assurance that we can negotiate with them in good faith while also, if for some reason that potential purchase offer were to fall through, work a simultaneous track of providing a listing for that. So I believe the proposal has come through, has a lot of merit to it, a lot of validity, a lot of specificity around it. I think there's a few details that need to be ironed out before we can put something before the council to contemplate, but that first offer through the door is one that has a lot of value to it and excited to negotiate with that group as well.
I like, I like to make sure that this proposal that has been brought to the city, that we take a strong look at.
Sure.
This is from the community that is out there, the stakeholders that are out there who live and work and have a strong desire to see Inglewood go to the next step. We purchased that building, I know Mr. Hart is still here, we purchased that building away from Mr. Clint Barnes several years ago because he was not wanting to do much with that building if at all. So we acquired it so we can have and take control of it so we can have the flexibility to, to do the right purchase agreement with a developer, and I think we have one here on the table that would work fantastically there.
As with listing your home or business for sale, there's a little bit of lead time into paperwork and getting it, you know, on the market and such, so that process would take some time. The process of negotiating with the respondent who sent something in can begin in earnest. So I think we can put that as our first priority.
Well, I hesitate to, to vote for this that Councilwoman DeLucy had put forward, but I need, and I'm getting the assurance from, from you, that this will take first precedent, the first proposal given.
As, what I would treat this as, again, the proposal has come in, it's very intriguing and has a lot of merit to it. I would treat the resolution that we have here as our safety play, that if for some reason that weren't to work out, we couldn't come to terms, the council would deem it ill-advised. We've got this backup plan to have it listed and marketed to other potential suitors.
Okay. Then move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
This city 18 months ago spent $169,000 on this building. We did that because it was a dangerous building, it was blighted. We have sat on this for 18 months. I have been asking to put this on the market for sale for cash for the highest obtainable price, not as a backup plan. This city is spending $180,000 on an election tomorrow. That is an asset that I know is worth at least $169,000. I believe the appraisal came in higher. I do not want it to be a backup plan. I want this building on the market for sale for cash for the highest obtainable price. These people have been making offers for months. There is no firm offer. I want the city manager to understand, this is an offer. I want it on, on the market for sale for cash for the highest obtainable price.
Just, just to clarify, the, we do have a firm offer that's come in from this group. There's a lot of specificity about purchase price, about how they intend to use all four floors of that building. I do have some questions that I would like to line out with them about some of the expectations they have about the, the city's relinquishment of that building. That's why we don't have anything on the agenda quite yet for you to vote. That just came in midweek, last week for us on that, but we intend to accelerate that to flesh that out. But I just did want to clarify, I would treat that as a, a pretty firm offer that has come in.
Mr. City Manager, do you understand, offer it for cash for the highest obtainable price?
I understand responding to the majority of the council, so I'll take my direction, however you guys want to give it.
19774, Madam Mayor, is very clear. A resolution directing the city manager to do all things necessary to place the comprehensive mental health building on the market. That's my resolution, not a backup.
It's been moved and seconded to approve 19774.
Madam, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
To, to move forward with the comments the councilwoman made, we did purchase that because it was a blighted building, because there was no movement made there. It was a small step, and I would almost say a big step, that the city has taken a direction to do things differently in all aspects of our city, and that had been an eyesore for quite a few years with no potential movement at all. The city, the city council was gracious enough to take those steps that they have not done before to acquire that building so we can have that under our control, so we can do what is the best for that area over there. We have had a numerous amount of, of active residents there, community leaders there who have spent hundreds, if not thousands, of hours donating them, their time and their expertise to try to move the whole area forward. If you are wanting to have for the, for the top dollar that possibly can be given out of there as opposed to the dollar amount that we have purchased into that, then I think we need to, and I would ask my councilmembers, to vote against this and that we work with the proposal that is given to the city manager, and that is for the purchase price of the purchase price that we purchased that building for. I think that shows a good faith effort by the city that we are community partners there, and we want to see that whole area developed. I think that is the best way to move forward with this. I think we give the, this offer its due diligence. We let the city manager's office go through it, weed out their concerns, make a counterproposal. This is how the whole song and dance is. Make a counterproposal back to the Inglewood Arts Missouri Nonprofit Group, let them have discussions with the city manager, and if we find out that there is no fire where the smoke is at, then I am 100% with you, Councilwoman. But until then, I would strongly recommend that my colleagues vote no on 19774.
So we're gonna wait and not get money for an asset. Instead, we're gonna just keep spending money. This has happened to this council repeatedly.
Yes.
The reason we bought this was so that we could move forward in that community. The councilman brought it forward and we did it to improve the site. I would go along, the man in the trenches should be supported by his council. You've done this, but if we were to approve this, I want it to be a fair and level playing field. I don't want anything else being put above in any way. If we approve this and it's put on the market, I want a fair market value, and I want it done that way. Now, let's either go ahead and let the man who's been doing the fight get what's due to him in his district, or we put it on the market.
I represent the whole city. I am a councilperson at large. Every district is my district. I have a hundred and seventeen thousand people to worry about. We have been fooling around for months. Put the silly building on the market, tell the world it's for sale. If we don't get an offer from anybody else, guess what? The guy gets it. Or we may get an offer for two hundred thousand dollars. That sure would go a long way in our economy right now, people. And that's what I want to do.
The decisions made here affect the whole city. It's not just one thing. But what I'm saying here is it's an either or in the decision.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman.
If I may, I would be all for your thoughts, Councilwoman, but we will be getting the purchase price back that we put into the building. If we were going into negatives, I may have second thoughts there with you, but we would be receiving the money back that we put in. So we would be breaking even, if you will. And also, this is important enough to the community there that this shows good faith effort into our wanting to revitalize the Inglewood and the Art District. So we're not losing any money. We would actually be saving money by moving forward with this purchase, this bid purchase, by getting it out of our hands. So we have a good opportunity to work with our friends, our neighbors, people who put tens, hundreds, and thousands of hours into the community to help move this forward. So I think we have a good opportunity here that we should not squander.
And putting it on the market is not going to squander a thing.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So I don't see that there's any conflict between the two. Obviously, we have had this recent offer this week, which has not flushed out with details, and that still has to be discussed and looked at with whoever this group is. But obviously, they can be put on any sort of sale contract as an exclusion, and that discussion can ensue very quickly, hopefully. And they would know that the property is going to be listed, which may perpetuate the sale quicker anyway. And so I don't think these two are exclusive. I think actually, instead of putting off us going and putting this on the market, this will put it on the market and may perpetuate the other person of interest to go ahead and purchase it quicker. So I would support the resolution. And John and Karen, I don't think it's going to be a conflict between the two. So, thanks.
Mr. City Manager, in light of Councilmember Roberson's suggestion or observation, if we were to enter into some sort of a relationship with a broker, and assuming the brokerage fees that would accompany that, if they were indeed successful in finding an appropriate buyer and with an appropriate development plan, would it be possible to write into that, an exclusion for this group, that there would be no fee if we were able to negotiate directly with the interested party? And what is our opportunity? What I don't want to see happen is put this on the market, have just anybody come buy it with no plan, and put us right back up to where we started. So can you please explain to me, from our past experience in selling city property, what are, frankly, you know, what are our options and our leverage in ensuring that we get an appropriate price, but also that we get an appropriate buyer with a acceptable use that aligns with the Independence for All strategic plan that this council has adopted?
Sure. So we can partner with a broker. As Councilmember Roberson referenced, we can work up some exclusion terms on that. I'm confident that we can get that where we feel comfortable with it. Let's say, for example, this other group that has brought forth a proposal that were to fall through for some reason, another group decides they want to bid on the building. We can have conversations with them about, you know, not just price, but how they intend to develop that building, what timeline they intend to develop it on. We can probably try to work up some conditions on that to the extent possible. So I'm confident that we can get to the outcome that makes sure that that building, which I believe, I speak for the council when I say we acquired that because we knew it was essential to the redevelopment of that area, we could make sure that it's done in a way that's timely, doesn't just fall into hands where it sits idle for another, you know, period of time, or have some sort of adverse impact to the area. I believe we can get to that same aspect through a broker, but also the exclusions for us to work with the group who does have a foot in the door at this juncture.
So Councilmember DeLucy's resolution, this would direct the city manager to bring forward that documentation that would then be approved by the council, the terms of that?
So if some other outfit decides they're going to, you know, be the highest bidder in this other group, you know, whatever, their exclusions doesn't work out, it would still come back to the council for final approval. There would be a final vote on all of that.
So Councilmember Perkins, under that scenario, including the active group, is excluding them from the process and outlines specifically that we have the right to refuse any offer if it does not align with the vision of the Inglewood Arts District and the strategic plan. Would you be comfortable moving forward with this resolution?
I would feel more comfortable that this was not approved and allow the give and take between these two to go forward. I think we're almost there.
And Mr. City Manager, I just want to clarify. You made a statement that you're speaking for the council, that we bought it to advance that area. We bought it because it was a dangerous building. And we have been sitting as owners of a dangerous building for eighteen months. And this resolution will move it and move it quick. And that's why I want the resolution to be approved tonight.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
No.
Perkins?
No.
Doertie?
No.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Roberson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
No.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Resolution fails. This takes us to our public hearing. Our first public hearing is for the industrial development project, speculative industrial buildings. This is a full public hearing. Mr. Chicago?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, on the agenda, you have the Van Trust Real Estate that proposes to develop two Class A industrial buildings. The total square footage of those buildings is about five hundred and fifty thousand square feet. Again, that's built over two Class A buildings. The project is located on thirty-four acres. It's located north of Artimai's Road between Jackson Drive and Little Blue Parkway. Each of the buildings will be set up for flexibility where they can accommodate different size of tenants, as well as a variety of uses, which will include, like, industrial, storage, warehousing, distribution, and manufacturing. They are seeking a Chapter 100 tax abatement. The proposed term of the abatement is twenty years. In addition, Van Trust is seeking sales and use tax exemption on construction materials used for the project. The total of the tax abatement over the twenty years amounts to twenty percent of the project. Included in your packet is the evaluation sheet indicating how this proposal meets the city's recently adopted economic development policy. We have Mark Randall here to answer any questions in regard to the economic development policy, and we have David Martin here from Gilmore Bell to answer any questions regarding the legal and financial aspects of this project. Finally, we also have the applicant is here for additional information. So that concludes my presentation, and we're here for any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is a full public hearing, so we will open it up. If there's anybody here wishing to speak in support of this project, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Weir, members of the council. My name is Tom Lesnik. I serve as president of the Independence Economic Development Council. Our offices are at two ten West Truman Road here in Independence. I speak tonight in favor of the Chapter One bond application by Van Trust. As you've read, this is five hundred and fifty thousand square foot of new industrial development in our community in the Little Blue Valley. Industrial development and the development of new industrial space for our community has been the number one priority for the DC for a number of years. Right now, I'll share with you some numbers. Our industrial vacancy rate is three point nine percent. If you look at that three point nine percent of what is a number of twenty-two million square foot of industrial space in the community, of that three point nine percent, most of that space is outdated. It is not modern space that advanced manufacturing considers very marketable. And so we don't have the opportunity that we should have to attract jobs and employers to this community. Space like this not only is good to attract new employment opportunities for our residents, it also gives us the opportunity for existing companies to help retain them, to keep them here in our community. It provides spaces they outgrow existing facilities to stay here in Independence. So it serves a number of needs, serves a number of things. I'll also point out that, you know, this falls within the Independent School District boundaries. During the incentive review committee discussion, it was pointed out that even with the incentive being offered, the school district revenues from this will be, I believe, three hundred percent more than what they're getting today. This is a win-win for everyone involved, and I would ask for your support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak in support? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Public hearing is dismissed. I'm saying four.
Bill number nineteen zero four six, an ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development projects for speculative industrial buildings, authorizing the City of Independence, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed thirty-seven million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and authorizing certain documents and actions in connection therewith. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill?
Just one question or two. Last time we discussed this, I asked if the city's bond rating, or, yeah, bond rating would be impacted if it went belly up and Van Trust didn't pay on the bonds. And I was told, I think, that we're okay. Am I right?
You're correct.
So where it says that the bonds and the interest will be limited obligations of the city, that limited obligations term is what's scaring me. What does that mean?
What that refers to is that these aren't, the city's not backing these bonds. So the city won't be on the hook to pay the debt service if for some reason revenues fell short to meet those payments, the annual payments. So we're not subject to annual appropriations where the city would have to come up for the shortfall for those.
Okay. And so it does not affect our bond rating. I understand we want to pay the money.
Right.
But will it affect our bond rating? That's my concern.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Dave Martin from Gilmore Bell.
So that limited obligation language means that the obligation to pay is solely from the payments that are made by the company under the lease.
Okay.
As we described in the last meeting, the company intends to purchase the bonds itself. So it, in effect, owes that obligation to itself.
Right.
So there's not a circumstance in which a default by the company would turn into a default by the city that would rise to the level of the monetary significance that is reviewed in terms of affecting a bond rating.
Okay. That was my question.
It's not the same type of bond as the city holds ratings with respect to you, where it actually does have some obligation to make a payment.
Well, and as you and I discussed last time, we may not be obligated to make certain payments, but we tend to make them anyway. I just want to make sure that if this thing went belly up, it does not affect our rating, our bond rating. That's my concern.
Right. And the difference there is this type of bond, there's no circumstance in which the city would ever be asked to make a payment, and so it doesn't affect the rating with respect to bonds where the city could be looked to to make a payment.
And is that because it's a three fifty-three or because of this agreement?
It's because, well, it's because of the way in which these Chapter 100 bonds are structured. So there is a circumstance in which through the Chapter 100 structure, a city could actually borrow money on behalf of another entity, which would look more like a bank financing or what we think of as a true financing. This buy-your-own-bond structure is different from that structure in which there isn't really money being borrowed to finance the project through the bond structure.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, I can't see down there tonight.
Just, I just wanted to, it's not a question for you. I just wanted to say how fortunate we are in this city to have Van Trust come and have the opportunity to build this new industrial space. This could be a watershed year for Independence. This potentially could start the ball rolling and bring in all sorts of new businesses and jobs to Independence. And this should be one of the most important votes for the city council this year, in my opinion.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman?
As of last week, I want to thank you again, and for going over that again, for having it said again, for being there again. And when we had the other offers that we refused, when these are the things that we found we didn't want, and you came forward to us, we certainly appreciate it. And what you brought is highly, highly acceptable. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doertie?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Roberson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Ordinance passes. This takes us to our next public hearing for the formation of the Inglewood Community Improvement District. Again, this is a full public hearing.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, we have the property owners in the Inglewood area who have, who are proposing a community improvement district, also known as the CID. The CID covers the Inglewood Arts District and includes properties at the intersections of Winter Road and Lexington, as well as the property at the intersection of Truman and Winter. The CID is proposing a one cent sales tax on all retail sales within the CID boundaries. As part of the petition, they have provided a five-year plan showing that the funds are to be used for public improvements within the districts. This could include things such as streetscape amenities, signage, banners, landscaping, public artwork, maintenance, as well as some private improvements. The petition mentions about the rehab of privately-owned businesses. This would be through a district matching grant program. The petition has been certified, that it has been signed by more than fifty percent of the property owners and more than fifty percent of the assessed real property valuation. The CID was reviewed and recommended approval by the Economic Development and Incentive Commission on July seventeenth. We have Mark Randall here, who's able to answer any questions in regards to the economic development policy, and we have David Martin with Gilmore Bell here as well. So that concludes staff's presentation. We also have the applicants here, in case you have any questions of them.
Okay. Thank you. Again, this is a full public hearing. I would like to invite anybody wishing to speak in support of this project to please come forward. I saw some movement.
I didn't know who was going to go first.
Yeah.
Lucky me. Madam Mayor, members of the council, Tammy Parsons, one 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 zero zero, East Winter Road. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Inglewood Community Improvement District, the CID, Community Improvement District, and I also like to thank Community Improvement Difference. Being a part of the grassroots of Western Independence community, please let it be known, we want to be successful. We strive to be self-sustainable, safe, clean, fun, and memorable. We are where the arts live in Independence. A major ingredient for success is partnerships, partnerships between the community and our city. When working together, anything is possible. The CID is a one percent retail sales tax, is a major ingredient that we need in our community's toolbox. Money. Money is a funding tool. It creates good in and for communities. You have to have it. The Inglewood Community Improvement District needs it. Having this tool will provide fuel to collaborate with other available opportunities, matching grants, that also have interest in building better blocks, better communities. I speak of the importance of the matching grants because the funds need to go as far as they can. What this CID will generate annually is approximately thirty-four thousand dollars. Having some skin in the projects needed and matching funds, CIDs are very successful. They work and could grow to much larger possibilities for the community needs. We need it. Our community needs it, residential and commercial. A tool that will make the community's visions become become realities, creating community pride. Currently celebrated by our community, working together, are our monthly art walks, holiday lighting and sleigh rides, the U.S. flags that hang down the parkway, the heart-to-heart connection that you've seen, partnering in the past with communities and forming the NID, the Neighborhood Improvement District, the light poles, that's what the NID did. We taxed ourselves to have that. In 2013, collaborated with Mark, the city, and the EBA for sidewalks on the north and just finished sidewalks on the south. The KC 150 brought trees to our parkway. Public improvements currently needed, we believe, are signage, like the one on the front page of On the Roll Redevelopment Plan. You know that picture that's on that page? That's our sign. We've had that sign for 10 years, friends. We've had no money to do what we need to do with that sign. This would help visions become realities. We also need streetscapes amenities, but we need maintenance with that, too. We need, we would like public artwork, but there's maintenance that this could help with, too. Landscaping with maintenance, we need to slow down the traffic that comes through our area. There will always be needs for a better community. The Inglewood Community Improvement District needs this tool. We are passionate people who choose to be a part of good in Western Independence. People help support what they help create. Guests of many businesses within the CID area deserve better, and they are thrilled to shop and support local arts, thrilled that they are a part of building a better community. A destination for all, to live, work, play, and visit. As a member of the Inglewood Community Improvement District, I support this CID, and I hope that you can, too. Thank you for the time spent and for the consideration in approving this community improvement district tool, and thank you for considering the recommended CID board. I am grateful to be a citizen of Independence. I am grateful for my friends, both the forever ones and for the new ones. I am grateful for my partner Darlene. My vision is to all grow old together in a community that we celebrate. I am grateful for the officers that keep my community safe. I am grateful for our 911 dispatchers and our first responders. I am grateful for the tribe of people who truly inspire my fuel. Mayor Weir, City Council, City Manager, staff, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in support of this project? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Ann Inahosa, and I live at 1616 South Overton, which is far, about four blocks from the Inglewood Art District. And I moved there because I loved the Inglewood Art District before I even was involved in it. I would come up there and wander around and enjoy what was there. I can't add any more to what Tammy has had to say. She did a beautiful, thank you for that, of explaining what we're all about, and that this community is a community that wants to work together, live together, grow together, and we can help ourselves to do that by your passing the CID. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Is there anybody else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Jackie Davis. They neglect to say all the noise that goes on over there every time they have something. They neglect to say the traffic that they have. You can't make a left turn on Winter Road because all them people are parked there. The noise is terrible at times. They block your driveway, they don't care. I'm against this. They don't tell you about all the bad things, they're just telling you what they want. You're supposed to support all of us, and we don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Public hearing is closed. Madam Saucier.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Have a couple housecleaning things, or actually one housecleaning thing, and also a point. This is not a new concept, trying to put a CID together in Inglewood. This has been kicked around for about a decade now, so this is not a new thought or a new plan. We have a great group of folks, community activists, community leaders, the Inglewood Community, the Art District. They have rallied together, and we've been working on this for approximately about a year, maybe just a tad over. And what this does, the City Council will give approval to form this district, which is just one step in the process, but is a very important step in this process. And as we're looking to develop everything and open up the valley out east, which is very much important and proper and the right thing to do, we most certainly need to take a look at our west side, our heritage that we have on the square, what we are doing in Inglewood. I think it's, we would not be doing our due diligence if we just developed east side without also working and helping develop the west side of town. There has to be a balance there. I think this is a good step in the right direction to do so. So with that said, I need to make an amendment to this, if you will. As I said before, we have worked on this for approximately a little over a year. In the meantime, we have had a resolution passed in June that put a little bit more language into a CID. So, Madam Mayor, I would move to amend Bill number 19047 to include a section which will require a cooperative agreement to be executed with, which will require the district to address litter, trash, and cleanup, walkability, and security in the project area. This will, this will ensure the district complies with Resolution Number 6337, which was passed in June 18th, 2018.
Okay, there's a motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend 19047 to specify the requirements outlined in the resolution again, the of 2018. Okay. Resolution Number 6337, which was passed on June 18th of 2018. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I just, Madam Mayor, I just don't know where we're, are you talking about adding a section or amending what's there?
Amending what is there and adding this in.
Okay, what part do you want amended?
Well.
It's just adding.
It's adding? Because under-
Sorry for my phraseology. Let's add in.
Okay, so you're adding a section to require the district to address litter and trash, cleanup, walkability, and security in the project area?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doarty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Roberson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Any further, Councilmember Perkins?
I would encourage my colleagues to vote for the formation of this district, and I want to thank everybody, Ann, Tammy, everybody, the whole Inglewood group. Guys, why don't you stand up? Let's see, I mean, you guys put in some serious hours, hundreds and thousands of hours, so thank you.
Okay, there is a, Madam Saucier, Madam Saucier, will you please read the bill?
Bill number 19047, an ordinance approving the petition for the establishment of the Inglewood Community Improvement District, establishing the district and making findings and authorizing actions related to the establishment of the district. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on the bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doarty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Abstain.
Roberson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Ordnance passes. Okay, next, a public hearing for the industrial development project for a manufacturing facility and business headquarters. This is a full public hearing. Mr. Scannell?
Yes, Mayor, and members of the council. Ronson Manufacturing, the local business, recently acquired the former Kmart building located at the corner of 291 and 24 for Highway. They purchased this building to consolidate their operations, their spread through several different locations throughout Independence. What they intend to do is to repurpose that abandoned retail strip center and big-box retailer so that they can put in their manufacturing facility, and this will also serve as their local headquarters. They are seeking Chapter 100 tax abatement. The term of the tax abatement is 11 years. Total project cost is a little over $6.1 million, which will consist of the land, buildings, site improvements, as well as personal property to the project. This project was considered by the Economic Development Incentive Commission on July 17th. They had recommended approval of this Chapter 100 tax abatement. We have Mark Randall here to answer any questions regarding the economic development policy, and again, we have David Martin with Gilmore Bell here, and finally, the applicant is here to answer any questions. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. This is a full public hearing. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in support?
Good evening again, Mayor Weir and members of the council. Tom Lesnick, President of the Independence Economic Development Council, offices at 210 West Truman Road. Just as we're excited about the Van Trust project and new development, we should be even more excited about retaining a company with deep roots in Independence. What Ronson is going to do with this facility is they're going to take an outdated retail facility, turn it into a manufacturing facility, continuing to provide great jobs for our community. I would urge your support for this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Public hearing is closed. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Madam Saucier.
Bill number 19048, an ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project for a manufacturing facility and business headquarters, authorizing the city of Independence, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $6,150,000, and authorizing certain documents and actions in connection therewith. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doarty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Roberson?
Yes.
Van Camp?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Ordnance passes. This takes us to our first readings. These will have their first reading tonight and their second reading consideration by the council on August the 12th. Is that right? No. Two weeks.
The 19th.
The 19th. We do have one emergency this evening that will receive two readings and require a two-thirds majority vote. Madam Saucier.
Bill number 19049, an ordinance authorizing contract with Megga Industries in the amount of $1,039,100 for the construction of a new Truman Road booster station, structure, pumps, piping, and electrical work on the south side of Truman Road, east I-435, and authorizing future minor change orders not to exceed $103,910 and/or time extensions appropriating $145,000 from the water fund net assets. Bill number 19050, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C-2, General Commercial, to District C-3, Service Commercial, for property located at 16113 East Truman Road in Independence, Missouri. Bill number 19051, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code pertaining to industrial setback standards. Bill number 19052, an ordinance authorizing execution of a cooperative agreement with the Kansas City Area Transit Authority for the federally-funded transit stop and pedestrian access improvement project, 70511601. Bill number 19053, an ordinance amending Chapter 9, Fire Code of the Independent City Code, making necessary revisions. Bill number 19054, an ordinance finding, determining, and declaring the necessity of acquiring general utility easements and temporary construction and grading easements for the Scott Avenue Bridge replacement, project number 70111808, authorizing the negotiation imminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project. Bill number 19055, an ordinance partially vacating the existing general utility easement document, 2008E0070519, of the Jackson County deed records and located at 3440, excuse me, 3440, South Lee Summit Road, Independence, Missouri, 64055. Bill number 19056, an ordinance amending Chapter 1, Article 31, Urban Redevelopment Corporations of the Independent City Code, to update said article to conform with current policies and practice.
Madam Mayor, I do have- Madam Mayor, I do have a question on this one.
Uh-huh.
Are we going to be publishing on City 7 these meetings? Because if we're taking something from a published committee, which is the Planning Commission, it's been on City 7 forever, and it's on, you know, the web and all that stuff. If we're moving something from the Planning Commission and giving it to another group, is the other group going to be televised and put on the city webpage or not?
I need to check with Meg Lewis on that, Councilwoman, and I'll reaffirm with you between now and the second reading.
Okay, thank you.
Bill number 19057, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Water Pollution Control Bargaining Unit, Local Union 53, for the term of July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, and declaring an emergency. Bill number 19057, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Water Pollution Control Bargaining Unit, Local Union 53, for the term of July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, and declaring an emergency. Second and final reading.
Is there any discussion on this bill? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Doarty?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Roberson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes. Ordnance passes.
Madam Mayor, I would like to move that 19058 be read as an emergency.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to read 19058 as an emergency. Councilmember DeLucy, would you like to?
19058 is an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code pertaining to medical marijuana facilities. Ever since we adopted an ordinance a week or so ago that exceeded the boundaries of the Missouri Constitutional Amendment that was passed just a few weeks ago, I have been bombarded with emails, telephone calls, from patrons of the marijuana, as well as prospective sellers of the marijuana, manufacturers of the marijuana, that what we had done violated the Missouri Constitution. I think you got a sort of a flavor of that tonight. Well, that's been my phone for, ever since we passed the ordinance. I do not want this city to pay one dime in lawyer fees. This city will in fact be sued because we exceeded the constitutional limitations set forth in the marijuana amendments that went through. As I understand it, these people who are doing the marijuana development, selling, et cetera, must make application to the state, and they get points for meeting certain criteria of a city. That window of opportunity for them to apply to the state is now until August 19. If we do not read this as an emergency now, they're going to miss that window of opportunity, or they're going to have to say, well, here's the Independent City Code, and it's unconstitutional, and here's my lawsuit I just filed challenging the constitutionality of the amendment made by the Independent City Council. Now, as I understand, our liability insurance, attorney fees for unconstitutional actions are not covered by our liability carrier, so any money we pay to lawyers who are my friends and I want them to make money, just not here. Any money we spend is coming from our general fund, from our pocket. It was not well thought out. I accept partial blame for that. That is the reason for my amendment. That is the reason I want it to be read as an emergency. I want to fix it before we get sued.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion, the motion to read this as an emergency? We still will consider the bill- We still will consider the bill, but right now we are voting on the motion to read this as an emergency.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I also believe it's urgent that we act on this. I think the longer we put it off, the more problems we're asking for, and I have one point of information, and that is, is this the ordinance that has been rewritten for us? Is this what we're looking at? Because I'm confused, my ordinance that I have even has a sheet from another ordinance as part of it, so it's very confusing. It's not the whole ordinance.
Yep. We do have in the packet the history of the ordinances as well, I believe, Becky, and so the top cover should be the amended ordinance that should have red lines in it.
I don't have any of that.
Okay.
So, so is this white sheet, is this what we're voting on, is this what we're talking about?
Yes.
And this has been amended from what Councilmember DeLucy had written, right?
It has been amended from what was adopted at the last meeting on the fifteenth.
Okay, so the red parts that are on here, is that what we're voting on as well?
You will need to adopt the entire ordinance as amended.
Yes.
Yes.
I learned from the best. I haven't had really time to look at this thing, it's just dropped on me a few hours ago. I learned from the best, and I'm against an urgency reading on this. If we could do a special meeting next Monday, that would give us plenty of time, or before the study session.
We can do a special meeting, there's no problem with calling a special meeting next Monday. We did, I don't feel like we've had, I understand the concerns that have been expressed tonight. I did not vote for this when it first came before the council because of those concerns. I think we have more information now, but we really have not had much of an opportunity to really review specifically what is being proposed this evening. I am happy to call a special meeting for next Monday to give us some time to review this more thoroughly with our state councillor, to make sure that we're clear about what we're, what we're doing.
Madam Mayor, I move to withdraw my motion to read it as an emergency.
Okay, and we will, Madam State Clerk, hold a special meeting on Monday, the twelfth, to consider these amendments.
If I may?
Yes.
I too voted against it because of the last second amendments that we did not have time to, and I think that this also falls in that category and would want time to study.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will read this on, on Monday, the twelfth.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I can muddy the waters just even more, please. So after our discussion that we had, I was, a constituent reached out to me that, and it is not here, and I don't know where it could be put in, if it would make sense to be put in, but the request was we did not build in retirement homes, the Groves specifically was named as part of being in that buffer of protection, if you will. So that constituent did reach out to me and asked me why we didn't, and I really did have a good answer. Things were moving pretty quick, pretty fast, and so I would like to add that into the mix to see if, how that might shake out.
Okay, we'll review that and get with you on that next week as well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'm so sorry to monopolize tonight. Are we reading it the first time tonight?
Yes.
And then a special meeting the second?
Yes.
Thank you.
To vote, yes.
Thank you.
So we can go ahead and have the first reading, Madam State Clerk?
Thank you.
Bill number nineteen zero five eight, an ordinance amending Chapter fourteen of the Independent City Code pertaining to medical marijuana facilities.
Okay, this concludes our agenda for this evening. Takes us to Councilmember Comments. I will start on my right with Councilmember, Councilmember Doarty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, nothing tonight.
Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Big vote tomorrow, Proposition P. It is something that we've been kicking around here for a little bit. I've been in politics often on since nineteen ninety-six, and I can tell you that the nature of how municipalities do business, how we acquire our sales tax is changing rapidly, and it will only change even more drastic into the future. So I would strongly suggest a yes vote on this proposition fee.
Councilmember Huff?
I have nothing this evening.
Councilmember DeLucy?
I would like, I would like an update on all the various economic incentives this city has, NIDS, SIDS, TIFs, three fifty-threes, whatever else we have, because I don't know all the programs we have, and I'd like to know, I'd like a list of all the economic incentives we've got. I'd like to know, are they active? And like, for example, there's been some talk on Facebook about a TIF on the square. I said, I don't know anything about a TIF on the square. Well, it turns out, I guess, that before I was on council, one was adopted. I had no knowledge of it, and so I just, I think we all need to have a broad picture of the obligations of the city, and that's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, that is actually something when we hired Brian Watson as, pardon me, Brian Kidney, it's been a long night, we're on almost three hours. When we hired Brian Kidney as our Director of Finance and Administration, one of the things I tasked him with was a cataloging of our economic incentives, the active ones, and where those stand relative to their termination and their performance. So we're in the process of working on that.
Great.
And we'll have something forthcoming for the council.
And maybe just a short description of what it is?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
There's maps of those on the city website, I think, that can be accessed if you go, I mean, they're a little bit difficult, maybe, don't make a lot of logical sense where they're located, but if you go to the city website and look under Maps, it shows you the boundaries of all of those special taxing jurisdictions that are there, and the economic development policy that the council approved recently, that Mark Randall and Tom Lesnick were closely on really outlines, you know, we didn't list out all the incentive programs that are available because the development community knows about those more than we do. They're generally issued by the state, so, but that's a good resource as well, and that's also available online.
Just one other thing. Just one other thing, Madam Mayor. Last time we were here, I did apologize for the remarks made from the dais, and I'd like to repeat that apology. Perhaps you missed it. I apologize for my failure to quickly react, as well as for the comments, so I do apologize.
Councilmember Roberson?
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow is one of those occasions when we have an opportunity to exercise our right to vote, and I encourage each of you to go out and vote tomorrow. The only thing on the ballot is Proposition P, and in my opinion, it is one of the important things that the city really, really needs, that support for the animal shelter, as well as for increasing the police force in Independence. I want to add that, that both of those funds will be supervised by a citizens committee. They will not be supervised by city staff, they will be reporting to the city and the city staff, but they will be overseen just like all of our other taxing jurisdictions have been for the parks and the streets. So I encourage you, it's, it's one of those, those important times for the city of Independence when we've had a budget deficit the past several years, we've had to cut staff, we've had to cut a lot of positions and a lot of activities for the city, and I hope that if this passes, that we can forestall any future cuts for quite a few years, especially for, for the police. So I encourage you to get out and exercise your right to vote tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Van Camp?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Couple comments that I wanted to make. As one of the speakers informed us earlier this evening, Mayor Quint Lucas has been invited, apparently, to come to Independence and, and address some of the issues that are challenging to both of our cities along our borders. I was able to have lunch today with Mayor Lucas, we had a wonderful conversation regarding issues related to crime, housing, and economic development, and I'm very excited to welcome the mayor into our community of elected officials here in Jackson County, and I'm very optimistic that he and I will continue to work together to address those issues that really are regional problems, that we need to come up with regional strategies to address. In regards to Forty Highway, I too live very close to the Forty Highway corridor on the south, on the west side of town, and, you know, there is a great concern about the safety of that area right now. We have had a couple of meetings I've hosted in our neighborhood, one to inform citizens about what Proposition P is about, and the other specifically to talk about safety issues. There was a presentation from our community policing department about some basic, what we all may be considered to be very basic measures that we should be taking to protect our person and our property, but I can tell you, as I'm sure every council member here can, as we canvass our neighborhoods during election times, as we go out and visit with neighbors in our neighborhood, it's astounding the things that you see. People with their front doors hanging open with the keys in the lock, their children, you know, playing in the front room, nobody around, nobody comes to enter the door, women who have the garage door open, unloading their groceries in their purses on the back, in the back of the car. So I know, you know, we have serious issues and we want to get down to those, but just, you know, reminding our neighbors about these things, these are why crimes occur in our neighborhoods, is cars left running, especially in the heat of the summer, the cold of the winter. I mean, they seem like they're, they're common sense, but they bear repeating. We will, I will continue to host meetings in, in neighborhoods around the city to address these issues and get more details and get more in-depth about what our police department can do with the cooperation of the community to help to address some of these issues that we are seeing, and I can assure you that Mayor Lucas is, he has been in office for three days and he's dealing with three homicides. So it's something that is very important to him, what he ran on and was successful in being elected as mayor of Kansas City. So I assure you, those things will continue. We will continue to utilize the resources that we have available, we will continue to put things before voters to help us to increase those resources to meet the needs that you tell us that are important to you. So I do encourage you to go out and vote tomorrow. Continue to engage in these neighborhood meetings, I know many council members have them. Continue to talk with your council members and let them know that the issues are important to you. Mr. State Manager, is there anything else this evening?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, we are adjourned.